This June 20th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by Samantha Hayes, an eighth-grade student from Rocky Run Middle School.
(Clerk) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I now will certify our closed meeting. In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on June 20th, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? And that is Mr. Wilson, Ms. Palchuk, Ms. Darinak Kofax, Mr. Moon, Ms. Keys-Gamaro, Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Corbett Sanders; those opposed; those abstaining; abstention by Ms. Hines; and Ms. McLaughlin had to leave early, so she sends her regrets. As is, Mr. McElveen is traveling. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. The Regulation 2601, Student Rights and Responsibilities, and consideration of the school year 2020-2021 Standard School Year Calendar Agenda Item have been moved to the July 11th School Board Meeting. And Dr. Braebrand is absent this evening, so Deputy Superintendent Dr. Ivey is joining us at the dais in his place. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meeting's webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphones. I now call on Ms. Hines for a recognition.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It is such a pleasure to read this recognition tonight. I am pleased to share with everyone news of a collaborative project involving the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions, Fairfax County Public Schools, and Trex, a leading recycled materials manufacturer of wood-alternative decking, railings, and other outdoor items. Many of you may have Trex materials in your own yards, and so you may already be familiar with some of the company's products. For a period of about four months, three congregations worked together to collect more than 700 pounds of single-use plastic bags, that's more than 60,000 bags, for recycling. The Trex company worked its magic and turned these recycled bags into a very useful, attractive outdoor bench. And you can see behind us here, pictures of that bench with some students sitting on it. This is a wonderful example of individuals, communities, and businesses that are mindful of our natural resources and the need to embrace and incorporate environmentally conscious alternatives into our daily lives. But it gets better. I am delighted to announce that the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions has decided to donate that bench to Luther Jackson Middle School, which is where we are right now. And it was recently placed in a courtyard at this school where students often eat lunch. I encourage everyone to take a close look at the bench at your next opportunity when you're here at Luther Jackson, and to read the attached plaque that is described with the words, "More than 40,000 plastic bags were recycled to earn this bench. Join the efforts to protect our one common home, the earth." On behalf of the School Board, I want to express appreciation to the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions, Trex, and members of the community for their efforts to bring this worthy project to fruition. Also, I am hopeful that this example may inspire interest in our schools, PTA organizations, students, and community members to partner in similar recycling projects that benefit us all. This is a good model to replicate. At this time, I would like to invite Eric Gopeloud from the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions, and I see we have other individuals who were involved in this project, to come forward and join the Board at the dais for a photo. And our thanks.
Tonight, four citizens have signed up to address the Board, and we also have two video testimonies. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. I have Risa May, followed by Jason Morgan.
Good evening. My name is Risa May. I'm a former elementary school teacher, current FCPS parent, member of the Executive Board of the Fairfax County Council PTA, and, finally, a member of the FLE Curriculum Advisory Committee that developed the proposed changes you've been considering this month. So I know firsthand all of the careful deliberation and genuine concern for all students that went into these recommendations. Tonight, I'm here to encourage you to please support these new learning objectives, and also to thank you for your supportive past changes to the FLE curriculum that support all of our students, including those that identify as LGBTQ. As educators, we're supposed to meet children where they are. Now, teaching tools may have changed since I was in the classroom. I used chalk. It was a really long time ago, but teaching goals, those haven't changed. For sure, the needs that teachers are asked to meet have expanded, and the job seems to get harder every year. But all teachers still work tirelessly to embrace their commitment to serve all of their students. The FLE curriculum and your leadership and support of LGBTQ students makes it all that much easier for teachers to meet the needs of these students. The language and lessons in our FLE curriculum tell our LGBTQ kids, "We see you. Your needs matter. Your safety matters. We care about you." For children in our schools now, it's simple. Their classmates are who they say they are. They're ready to honor that, and I hear that from current teachers, from my own children, and their friends. So let's follow their lead. We can all learn a lot from this younger generation. The steady stream of anti-LGBTQ initiatives from Washington makes advocates on the local level all the more important, since the LGBTQ community depends on local leaders to support and defend them in their daily lives, such as in our schools. So thank you for being those supportive leaders, for showing respect and concern for your LGBTQ constituents, as you do for all the residents of Fairfax County.
Mr. Morgan, followed by Norm Hall.
May it please the Board, my name is Jason. I am the father of two children in Fairfax County Public Schools. I serve as Budget Chair for the Fairfax County Council PTA. I've been on some of the basal resource adoption committees, and most importantly, for purposes tonight, I've served as parliamentarian for the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee for several years. I'm here in my personal capacity to share some observations about the work of FLECAK. Specifically, I want to commend the FLECAK members themselves. FLECAK issues are not easy to resolve. There are just so many different subject matter areas where you have strong conflicting values that are difficult to resolve, where there just isn't a lot of common ground, or where it's hard to find, and some years are easier than others. This year was especially easy, thanks to the solid leadership of the FLECAK Chair, and especially thanks to the members themselves. FLECAK members were not shy about sharing a diverse variety of perspectives with each other, but they observed the rules of decorum, they listened to each other, they treated each other with respect, and they worked together to make the hard decisions. FLECAK members appointed by the School Board members, including the students who are appointed by the student representative, play a critical role in helping to understand how proposed changes will be received by students, teachers, and the community at large. My hope is that you and your successors will continue to ensure that good people, willing to listen to each other and work together, continue to serve on the FLECAK. When members of the community come together to resolve difficult FLE issues with civility and purpose, they serve as a bright example for us all in how civic engagement should work in our society. So thank you for your role in bringing so many dedicated members of the community together to serve on the FLECAK this year.
Mr. Hall, followed by Amy Canova.
Good evening. I'm Norm Hall, the Advocacy Chair of the Fairfax County Special Education PTA. As this audience of School Board members, staff, and citizens likely knows, I regularly follow Board meetings and work sessions where there may be substantial data relevant to and discussion about the problems with special education. So Monday was circled on my calendar with two sessions on the discipline study, one session on student rights and responsibilities, and a report on caring culture. Lots of great questions, interesting theory, and explanation of implementation choices for general education students. FCPS has shown again through reflection of past practices what a caring culture it is for these students. But what about the others? How long were the meetings in total? Six hours? Seven hours? How many minutes were focused on special education? To be sure, many references were made to students with disabilities, but for a group representing roughly 14% of the total student population, it's astonishing that basically zero analysis was done by staff or consultants to consider the special needs and circumstances of these students. Goodness, staff couldn't even approach the beginning of the SRNR discussion with possible changes to address special education concerns, not even changes requested by School Board members. Again, to be clear, my concern is not with the multitude of staff who are trying to teach and provide support services for this community, nor do I believe that any group of FCPS students receive too much support from the school system. It is instead with a planning that starts at the top of this administration. In particular, I found it galling to hear Dr. Duran state on Monday that a clear case for a deep dive into special education, for an important facet of the discipline issue, to be studied. No kidding! But his four-page presentation that concluded the first work session did not include this point. Perhaps the obvious need for such a study was why this School Board directed the superintendent to undertake this work on May 24th, 2018. This disingenuous comment was preceded by my painful detection that the mention of special ed was stripped from the verbiage describing the Board directive as part of the agenda for Monday's meeting. I thought the equity reports were great, but FCPS would be further along the plan if special education excellence had the scope of the equity work included, work on how to tackle the special challenges of students with disabilities caught up in the discipline process. Why do we need to follow on consultants to catch up? Were these challenges deemed too trivial to consider, or just not important enough? To what should we attribute the lack of attention to special ed as consultants and staff prepared for extensive discussion in all manner of social-emotional needs? How do we rule out the hypothesis that this exclusion is not due to prejudice against persons with disabilities? How do you rule out the hypothesis that this omission is not due to prejudice against persons with disabilities? I hope there's time for leadership reflection on the existence and magnitude of this bias before the Restraint and Seclusion Task Force meeting on Monday. You must do this if you really want to gain the trust of this community. We don't need more negligence at this critical time. Thank you.
Ms. Canova.
Good evening. My name is Amy Canova, and I am a proud FCPS graduate. I graduated from Lake Braddock Secondary and went on to pursue two graduate degrees. My academic and extracurricular preparation in high school made college easy for me. I excelled and earned scholarships, but what I learned from FLE is that when I got my period, I wouldn't be able to play Annie in my dream role anymore. My understanding of sex was that it resulted in pregnancy and STDs. I had zero knowledge of consent or the ability to say no. My first sexual encounter was rape, but I blamed myself for it, because what I learned was that if I loved him, I should sleep with him. What I learned is that I promised him after six months, or this is not sex. I don't stand before you as a victim. I stand before you admitting I knew nothing about my own body, how it worked, my rights, or how to have sex safely, or that there were developmentally appropriate sexual behaviors I could be engaging in. I didn't understand the ovulation cycle until it was explained to me by my reproductive endocrinologist, who handed me a bill for $10,000. But I had it easy. I was born female. I identify as female, and as a teenager, only understood my attraction being to men. I sat beside transgender persons, who at the time didn't know they were trans, who learned nothing about the diversity of gender, gender expression, presentation, or identity, and for close to 30 or 40 years felt needlessly flawed. I sat in lessons that exclusively taught about sexual intercourse with the opposite sex, with classmates who received their sexual education in the backseat of cars, in the parking lot, or under the bleachers. I had classmates who gave birth before graduation. I didn't grow up in an era in which a young person could be sold into sex trafficking, and ironically enough, I grew up in an era in which if my rape had ended in unwanted pregnancy or one that endangered my life, I would have had no difficulty in seeking an abortion. Times have changed. I stand before you now as a veteran school psychologist and a nationally recognized expert in LGBTQ youth, who has learned more about the sexual and reproductive health of teenagers than on most days I want to know. I recognize that the FLE curriculum should recognize the diversity of gender, sexuality, and how both are unrelated but natural aspects of the human condition. I stand before you as an expert in development and assure you that no teenager wants to learn about sex from their parents, and most are learning about such on Tumblr, on adult dating sites, and from relationships they are at times unready for. I stand before you during Pride Month to thank you for having a curriculum which is inclusive and affirming. I stand before you recognizing that we are a progressive county who must remain at the forefront in setting a standard for a nation in quality education for our youth. And I stand before you in solidarity, knowing that you too recognize the need to continue supporting an FLE curriculum which is necessary, appropriate, well-reserved, and inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canova. We now have two videos.
Good evening, members of the School Board. My name is Amber Beekler, and I want to thank you for your continued support of our LGBTQ inclusive FLE program. It is imperative for gay, lesbian, bisexual, trans, and queer students to feel included in our lessons. There is a saying, "You can't be what you don't see." As a trans woman, I can speak from personal experience of struggle of not seeing someone like myself. Our schools need to be inclusive of all students. It is also just as important for our non-LGBTQ students to be aware of and learn about people with different identities and experiences than their own. They're going to meet many different kinds of people throughout their lives, and learning about different people helps to foster acceptance and respect. When most people are accepting and supportive, the lives of LGBTQ people become safer as a result. I encourage the School Board to continue supporting our LGBTQ community, and once again, thank you.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Braebrand and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby Jr., and I am current President of FCPS Pride, which is an organization for LGBTQ employees, parents of LGBTQ students, and the LGBTQ family members of students and allies in Fairfax County Public Schools. Our membership has expressed the appreciation for the continuation of the lessons in 7th and 12th grade in family life education that are inclusive of LGBTQ people. LGBTQ students feel so much more welcome in school if they see themselves included in their curriculum, even if it is just a tiny part of the curriculum. Parents who really don't want their children to hear and learn about queer people can opt out. It amazes and saddens me that folks would in fact not want their children to hear and learn about such a vibrant part of our culture and civilization, indeed about any class of people at all, but that is in fact their right. In talking to students, parents, and teachers in the three years since these LGBTQ inclusive lessons have come out, it becomes apparent that some teachers gloss over them, and some teachers leave them out entirely. I think a good approach to making FLE teachers more comfortable with these topics would be more in-service modules for all staff about the characteristics, concerns, and worth of LGBTQ people. I would recommend a simple, short, online module by an organization named CAGITO. You already have this available to all staff through the Community Services Board. You simply could add it to the required list of online trainings that we have to do at the beginning of the year. Montgomery County and Ardington County already do that. It would be a start, but by and large, thank you very much for developing and continuing these lessons.
I now call on Mr. Wilson for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the School Board approve the Strategic Plan Goal II Caring Culture Report as detailed in the Agenda Item.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Palchuk. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly. The report was presented at the work session, and we had a fairly robust conversation about the report. And credit to my colleagues who brought concerns about the report as presented, and we brought next steps for how we could approve it going forward. I think that the main takeaway for me with this report is that the importance of emphasizing a caring culture within Fairfax County Public Schools, and of course, that caring culture, at least from my perspective, really gets down to the individual students and their families, their parents, and how they feel in terms of their interactions with the school system. And that is an area that the school system can improve, and I think in terms of the reporting, as we get better at presenting the data to the Board about the caring culture that we're trying to promote within Fairfax County Schools, this will be a very positive step forward as a school system.
Ms. Palchuk, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. Also, just adding on to what my colleague, Mr. Wilson, mentioned, I think this is a very critical report, and while it is not where we want it to be yet, I think it's one of those reports where we have seen some progress, and I think appreciate the investments that were presented, that we have started, and that we expect to have in the future. So especially when it comes to all families feeling respected, to having cultural competency, to working with families and with our staff to ensure that we have a positive culture, that we have a healthy culture, and that we find targeted supports and professional development to help support that work. As a teacher, I know that lowering the effective filter and having students feel safe and comfortable is the number-one way to connect and have them thrive in school, and I think the goal and one of the biggest challenges we have in our system is that integrity of implementation and figuring out how the things that we do well in some places, in some classrooms, in some schools, can be disseminated and produced and supported across the system. So following along with what Mr. Wilson said, you know, a small step to where we hope to be, but I think a very important baseline that has been gathered here, and we look forward to seeing the progress throughout the years.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Ms. Evans, please.
Thank you very much. I do support this goal report. As has been said before, we still have a ways to go with our caring culture. This is the goal report where we talk not only about making sure we have a welcoming environment for all of our students and all of our families, but also that we promote healthy behaviors with our students and with our staff. So it is critical as a school system, we do have a responsibility to make sure that we do everything we can to promote good nutrition, enough exercise, and enough sleep. So I would be remiss if I didn't point out that one of the areas where we still need a lot of work with our students is sleep. That's one of the lowest levels. It's not that we haven't tried, but we still need to do more. Only 31% of our students are getting what is deemed to be adequate sleep. This is among our adolescent students. So we still have some more work to go with that. I also think that it's critical, some of my constituents have raised with me the issue of food security, and that's a report that we're going to be getting, how we are addressing food security for our students when they're not in school. They're in school for 180 days, and those... They're in school for 180 days, and we provide lunch for all of our students. We provide breakfast now for students. But there's concern in our community about students, what do they do in the summer? What do they do at winter break and spring break on snow days? So we are doing more. I just was part of the kickoff for the Summer Meals Program. So we are doing a great deal, but we do need to see where our gaps are and make sure that we're helping all of our students and families. And less but not least, certainly, an ongoing issue for our students is stress. And this is an area where this board has had a longstanding concern about mental wellness and student stress. So those are some key areas where this is a report where we can measure how well we're doing. So thank you for those that put this excellent report together, and I look forward to continuing our progress.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz?
So while I am going to support and pass this report, I'm going to repeat a little bit of what I said because I wonder sometimes if some folks watch our all-day work sessions. They are broken down this past Monday. The topics in the work session are broken down so that the videos are pertaining only to that particular topic. But was, as alluded to by one of our speakers, some of those work sessions themselves can be quite long, hours, and ours was on Monday. But there are a couple of things that I want to highlight because I consistently, this is nothing different than I've said, I think, for maybe eight years, and I did a little "I'm sorry" over my shoulder to Ms. Johnson, but she knows to expect this. It's one thing to produce a report that has information in it and data in it, and the data is getting better, and I am thankful for that. It's another thing for there actually to be data analysis and a meaningful set of recommendations that come from the data analysis of the report. So for example, one of the things that I did in the backup information that was provided to us and is available on Board Docs is I looked at our violations over time, and we were given a report from 2012 to 2018. Our drugs and alcohol violations are flat. We actually have fewer drug violations in 2018 than we did in 2012. Our other violations, which is sort of a catch-all category, is also flat, actually down from 2012 in 2018. However, what is concerning is that assaults are up 250%, and disruptive behavior is up 200%. And when I talk with my principals, when I talk with teachers, the climate in the classroom or the climate in the building is very difficult, and quite often, it's these disruptive behaviors that are driving some of the difficult ways in which we support our students and whether or not there's academic learning going on with these disruptive behaviors. In addition, as my colleague Ms. Evans indicated, what I said at the time was the worst slide was the slide that indicated, and I think it was Slide 13, was the slide that indicated the levels of student stress, which is a sort of pernicious, year in and year out, never gets better situation. And I think a lot of that has to do with the level of assessments that are being done and the hoops that students are hurdles, frankly, that they're having to go over. And what is it that we're doing to look at sort of the high stakes? You know, every period or every other period, students have something due and something graded, and what kind of pressures that lays on students who then stay up late, they don't get the sleep, you know, it becomes a cycle. I am concerned when I look at the escalation of student violations. 2.5% of our elementary students commit violations of our student disciplinary code, 12.3% of our middle school students do, and 15.2% of our high school students. So the issue of, you know, what does that data inform? How is it that we're going to become more proactive in heading this off as it obviously grows from elementary into high school in terms of the participation rate of students and the number of discipline infractions? And so these are the types of takeaways that I'm hoping in the future in successive reports that staff looks at this data and then says, "Of everything that's in this data, these are the things that have the greatest degree of impact where we feel like we need to tie some strategic thinking and dollars in the budget to help us make effective governing decisions," rather than, "Here's a report. Thank you very much. There's a bunch of information in it, and let us know if you have any questions." That's a less efficacious way of governing, I think. And we have the ability with this improving data lens to make some meaningful decisions with our dollars and with our budget going forward, and I look forward to a continuing improvement of this school report on a going-forward basis.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Darrenak Kofax.
I too want to express my support for passing this. I do want to just make a note that while I agree, Ms. Schultz, with what you're saying as far as needing analysis, I believe this is the first year, so this is the data collection year, and I think analysis will come in the future, and we will be able to do that. I think, as some of my colleagues have noted, there are some areas where we know we need to progress. Student stress is one of those. I agree, Ms. Evans, but what we're doing now is looking at this, and we're looking at the opportunities we now have to have wellness resources for our kids and our teachers, and I think we will grow as we do in subsequent years as we look at the data that this report has. So for the public who's out there right now, I think it would be well-served if you have a particular interest in this part of our strategic plan, that the work sessions and a week ago today when we had the initial report would be very helpful for you because there is some definite good news information in here, and I look forward to continuing that.
Thank you, Ms. Darrenak Kofax. I too will be supporting this report, but I did want to follow up on some of the conversations. I appreciate, Ms. Schultz, your excellent summary of the discussion that all of us had at the board table this past week because it really was a discussion about how we take what has been established as our baseline, the first time that we've been using the metrics that were just established by this board, and then we actually addressed it from a return-on-investment perspective. And so it's a first step. There are, you know, obviously, we want to continuously improve, but some of the good news pieces of the report are that we have made progress towards all of our students feeling respected and included in their classroom environments. And we have made progress on our employees feeling respected. We have made some progress in a number of other areas, and so as Ms. Darrenak Kofax suggested, we encourage you to take a look at this Caring Culture Report because the progress made on having a drug- and alcohol-free environment is also very important. But what did come up in that discussion was that the data in this report did not take into account what is becoming a national epidemic on vaping, and the staff was very proactive in saying this was an area that we needed to do more. And the other piece of this report, although we addressed it at the end of the day this past Monday, it actually goes hand in hand with the discussion that we had both on discipline and on the SRNR because the report very, actually states that we have not made the progress that we should be making on discipline. And as Ms. Schultz mentioned, it talks about behaviors and what do we need to do to help our students and our families manage behaviors? Because this is a partnership between the staff in our school buildings and our parents and our students. And so much of the discussion really focused on behavior management. And so you will have seen, as I mentioned earlier this evening, that we postponed our adoption of the SRNR so that we can take some of the analysis that was done here, a lot of the analysis that was done by our consultants, as well as listening to our stakeholders in areas such as special ed. And we are going to have another work session on Monday to ensure that we address some of the challenges we found in this report, some of the challenges we found in the disproportionality. And so I just wanted to explain to everybody how all the various piece parts fit together. And so with that, I am going to call for the vote. So all those in favor of approving the Strategic Plan Goal II Caring Culture Report as detailed in the agenda item, and that is unanimous with all those at the table. I now call on Ms. Evans for a motion on the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee Report of Recommendations.
I move that the board approve recommended media and lesson objectives as detailed in the agenda item and as reviewed and recommended by the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just a brief explanation of what we're doing tonight. Every year, the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee makes recommendations for improvements in our family life education curriculum. Last year, in the 2017 to 18 school year, FLECAC made a complete review of the entire curriculum and reviewed it and brought back recommendations for the board that had a real scope and significance to them. This year, they did identify a few areas where they still needed to make some improvements. So this year, they have three recommendations for us to consider. One of them is to add some information in our family life education about sexting, which is not currently there, to add it to grades six, seven, and nine. It's currently only in grade eight. So there's concern about this issue and wanting to educate our kids on some of the dangers of abusing media in this way. We also, the second recommendation, is to add in grade nine some information about pornography and access, basically to warn against accidental exposure to this on the internet and the dangers to healthy relationships. And then thirdly, in grade nine, to give some more, what they're calling bystander awareness, to have bystanders help others, particularly in the area of sexual assault. So people can help other people with that. I will mention that the recommendations that were given to us this year, most of them passed unanimously by those who were present and voting. So these do have widespread support from our FLECAC Advisory Committee, and I do urge my colleagues to support these three changes.
Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, I'll be supporting this motion, and I want to thank them again, members on FLECAC, working hard on these important topics, curriculum issues, year after year. And I also want to thank those 21 members of the community who sent us their written comments on the FLECAC recommendations as well, and also those who spoke on annual report this evening at the school board meeting. Whenever I get the FLECAC annual report, I take a look at whether those recommendations come with a unanimous support. As Ms. Evans pointed out, that most of the recommendations came in with a unanimous support. But there was a one where I saw just a few members not necessarily supporting the recommendation that has to do with a ninth-grade videotape. So just for the public's benefit and also my colleagues, I want to ask Dr. Payne whether you could share with us whether there was, you know, what concerns those members who didn't support the video might have had.
So regarding the video, there were a couple of concerns that there was mention of sort of college terms, but students in the scenario calling campus police. But throughout the narrative, they also reference high school and situations at that level, understanding that vendors create media for multiple levels. Another person along those same lines also wanted to see more media. We routinely review media that we can obtain from different vendors and try to bring them the best, and we're struggling with getting some good media in this area. So we had put one in 11th grade a couple of years ago, and this one just became available recently. So we're trying to keep it at, you know, the most current copyright that we can. And then a video with scenarios helps focus student discussion and help get them talking.
Okay, thank you so much. I think that video was recommended by a vote of 15 to 3, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I have Ms. Schultz followed by Ms. Keys-Gamar.
So I have a number of questions, and I apologize to my colleagues. There's a late follow-on motion that will really address, you know, this many questions in the future. But in much of Virginia's, I think, 138 school divisions, 6th grade is a part of middle school. And so my question is, what conversation, and I don't even know who to ask because I don't know who's here representing, okay, maybe Liz Payne, what was the conversation around the fact that 6th grade is a part of elementary school? And what, introducing these type of topics in an elementary school environment where kids bleed out into the hallway and into the lunchroom and onto the bus and the walk home, what that looks like in an elementary versus a middle school environment where many 6th graders are across the Commonwealth?
The committee discussed that students are receiving personal devices at home and using those more often at an earlier age. This recommended lesson objective also, they wanted to focus on the cyberbullying piece and really getting them to think about misuse of social media, and there were positive aspects, of course. So they wanted to, you know, try to cover a variety of issues in this area and wanted to introduce sexually explicit communication, wanting to have students to have the knowledge and skills. We hope they never need them, but wanting to have them, and especially as you said, most of our elementary schools are K6, but wanting them to have that knowledge and skills before they get to middle school.
So I'm glad you brought up the phrase sexually explicit. So my question is, if you're teaching children not to send sexually explicit messages, how do you do that without talking about what is sexually explicit? And then that becomes a question of, now we're introducing sexually explicit material or content in an educational setting that is basically an elementary educational setting. How does that comport with best practices? What do other organizations that are subject matter experts have to say about this? You know, where did the idea of this come from? Is this something that is, you know, other organizations are recommending? I don't see any of the backup material for necessarily the origins of introducing this at elementary school.
So the recommendation came from the committee themselves, that they wanted to do it at 6th grade because of the prevalence of devices that they have. It was at their recommendation.
Do we have any data that shows how many 6th graders have in a device?
No, I do not.
Okay, so we don't know. That's anecdotal information. It's not wrong necessarily, but again, that's making a decision based on, in the absence of information. of information, not in the presence of it. Will the will the curriculum that will that is posed, because all we have here is a lesson objective, is the curriculum that's going to be delivered, will that be delivered starting this fall? And will it be developed as a proprietary in-house development of this curriculum? Or is it a commercial off-the-shelf product?
The curriculum will be developed in-house. We will have it posted prior to the beginning of the school year so that as schools start to share information about family life education and the opt-out forms and letters go out, it should be posted. I usually have it up no later than second week of August, usually beginning of August. We try to make every effort to get it posted as soon as we can. And it's not proprietary, it's done in-house.
So, when you say have the have the curriculum posted, does a broadcast message go out to all parents of sixth graders that this content is available for review? And I say that because last year, I think we received 1,000 comments on FLE or something like that. And to only receive 21 comments this time, I wonder what our level of engagement actually is with the community on any proposed FLE changes. Like, we don't go out to the community doing any community meetings or, you know, there isn't a work session, there's actually no board discussion at all. Literally, this is the first time we're seeing and discussing these recommendations and being asked to vote on them the same night. So, what what is the the means by which the parents of rising sixth graders will will learn that this content is available?
So, annually, schools are required to provide a family life education overview letter that gives and accompanied by the grade level appropriate opt-out forms. In both the letter and any newsletter, we have a couple paragraphs that can go out in school newsletters. And the opt-out form at the very top, it talks about that parents can access all curriculum through the parent portal of FC my FCPS 24/7 Blackboard, as well as they can access it in their schools, at their local school. And as far as FLECAC recommendations, annually, our Department of Community Relations, Community Outreach advertises this through their regular outreach. I don't have the specifics on that, but that is an annual process that they do to share with media outlets.
So, the reason I I'm asking some of these detailed questions, because one of the things that it's listed in the lesson objective, and we're being asked to pass a curriculum change, and we don't know what the curriculum is. All we know is the lesson objective. So, we're we as a board don't even have the curriculum yet. We're just being authorized to or being asked to authorize the development of curriculum, you know, so we have to pass it to see what's in it kind of scenario again. But one of the things that it specifically says is the positive, you know, including identifying the positive aspects of social media. And to my knowledge, social media is should not be accessible to children under the age of 13. And I'm pretty certain that all sixth graders are under the age of 13, or virtually all. And there was a Washington Post report that just came out just this week, how the 1998 law that was designed specifically to protect minor children from online adult content, one, is not effective, and two, is being actively subverted by companies and corporations to allow access by minors. And so, I'm not entirely sure what would be a positive aspect of social media that we should be teaching or encouraging sixth graders on. And I don't even know what that I can't even review it because we don't have the curriculum. So, can you can you tell me a little bit about what the discussion is that we're going to be telling sixth grade students that there's positive stuff having to do with social media when we actually should be actively discouraging participation in any social media at the sixth grade elementary level?
So, the positive aspects may include things such as keeping in touch with family members who are not nearby, sharing, you know, family photos and things as far as their families are concerned, however they choose to do that, communicating with other students. We have a lot of global projects, so there's a social, you know, connections with that, with a lot of working with people from, you know, not from this area, those sort of collaboration communications.
Well, since they can't have or not supposed to have a social media account under the age of 13, again, I see that there's a pretty significant disparity. It's one thing to participate with your parents' account and communicate with your grandparents. That's that's an entirely different message, I think, than saying that there's positive aspects of social media accounts for for children who are 10, 11, and 12 years old. So, in the end, because there was unanimous support for this, and there is a concern, and I've had, I probably was the earliest and most consistent voice on the board for digital citizenship lessons for our students that have now been incorporated into our curriculum, I believe very strongly in digital citizenship for our students, all aspects of it. I caution that this is mission creep and that really the messaging should be, don't get your sixth grader a cellphone, because it's not a phone. It's a supercomputer that has access to all that is good and all that is very, very bad in the world. And adults have a hard time discriminating use of a supercomputer in their hands or 32 supercomputers in their possession. And asking, you know, a 10, 11, or 12-year-old child to have that discrimination, I think, is a bit much. So, I look forward to seeing these lessons. I do have a follow-on motion that would posit a presentation of this material to us in advance of asking us to vote on recommendations, just so we can actually have a conversation, have time to ask questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. We'll look forward to your follow-on motion. And I will remind people that all of these materials were posted online, have been out there for a while, and people did have opportunities to call staff and get some of these questions asked. So, I appreciate your comments, but really look forward to your follow-on on that area. I have Ms. Keys-Gamarra followed by Mr. Wilson and then Ms. Hines.
Thank you for these recommendations for FLE. And I actually, you know, I appreciate my colleagues' comments. Unfortunately, while I would love to send messages to sixth-grade parents not to give people phones, I have to say, as an attorney who has met with hundreds of young people, I rarely meet one that doesn't have a phone. And so, I'm grateful, actually, I've been one of the things that I've been concerned about is cyber bullying and how we use these this technology, how we use even texting to friends is not something that the young mind really understands. And so, for that reason, I was actually very glad to see these recommendations because I have seen some young folks end up in some very precarious situations where they have to answer to folks even in the law because they have engaged in behavior that falls on the criminal spectrum. And so, to the extent that we can provide greater guidance, I don't believe that we have to show pictures or use inappropriate language in order to teach, but we, you know, just as though we talk about good touch and bad touch and and things of that nature. I think that we can make sure that we draw boundaries, healthy boundaries with respect to using this technology. So, I am very pleased to see this. I would actually support Ms. Schultz's follow-on motion. I think I haven't read it yet. But I'm happy to review the the curriculum once it is prepared. But I think that this is, I commend the committee for looking into this. I think that this we have to progress with technology, and technology is widely available. Unfortunately, we are not always able to tell parents what to do. And one parent, there's a lot of variation even within the same neighborhood with respect to what a parent would consider to be appropriate. I think for the most part, parents want to be able to reach their kids and want their kids to be able to reach them. But unfortunately, we can fall into some things that are less than savory, and I'd love to be able to head some of that off. So, I certainly support the education on how to use this this device that can be both good and bad. And I look forward to receiving more details on how we can deal with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. I have Mr. Wilson followed by Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I think that I'd like to say a thank you to the FLECAC Committee for taking up the difficult topic of pornography, which has has been a scourge on our communities for quite some time now. And I have to say that when I saw that the first objective was to define pornography, it reminded me of a famous Supreme Court Justice's line that he doesn't know how to define pornography, but he knows it when he sees it. So, it has been a challenge for people to figure out, you know, where where do you draw that line on on the definition of pornography? And since we haven't been briefed on this, I wonder whether, Ms. Payne, you could elaborate on what that definition might be for the purposes of the ninth grade students.
It'll take me a moment to find my notes. We did discuss that as a committee, but I need to go back and look at my notes.
Okay. So, that's obviously a critical question, and I think the the other piece of what you have in there gets to some of the the very important issues, the impact on relationships, and, you know, the effect on children and how they perceive what their body should look like, how young women should be treated, what's the appropriate behaviors in relationship can be impacted by the the use and abuse of pornography. And I say abuse because I think the neurological research on this is becoming pretty clear that that it is an addiction, and the use of pornography, in fact, rewires the pleasure centers in your brain. And so, I hope that when we when we begin this process of developing a curriculum for the high school students, that we keep in mind that 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 aspect of it and make sure that we are looking at all of the best research that's out there. Lastly, I think that that, you know, in years past, I've made comments about the FLE curriculum more generally. But once again, I am, I think I'll support Ms. Schultz's motion that we have the FLECAC Committee present and that we have a discussion and a work session on FLECAC Matters. But I also think that, you know, once again, I want to reiterate to the board that the opt-out system we have in place, it doesn't indicate necessarily parental consent to all of the topics and subtopics that we teach their children in schools. I think Ms. Schultz brings up good examples about, you know, where where a child in sixth grade is and whether or not it's appropriate to be talking to that child about sexting. And really, only the parent can really answer that question. And I think our parents, I think many of them, because they don't necessarily have English as a first language, they make they may maybe making assumptions about what we're teaching their children, and they might be surprised if they actually knew what was being taught. And they might actually, if we had an opt-in system, be able to then clarify with them so that then we make sure that each parent and each child has the opportunity to know in advance the topics that are going to be discussed and at which grades, and then make an informed decision as to whether or not their child should participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I I do support the inclusion of the material for sixth graders on the use of phones, for better for worse. Not all parents are going to have their children have phones at that age, but an awful lot of them do. And once the children have access to this powerful technology, they need to be cautioned. And as Ms. Keys-Gamarra in her own professional life, we see children who get themselves into very difficult situations. They're young, and they don't realize the power that they have in their hand and how they can harm themselves, harm others, and they need to learn very, very early on what's right and wrong, what's lawful and unlawful, and and that they'll get caught. And and the consequences can be very difficult. So, I I think it's important. And again, parents can opt their students out of the entire program or lesson by lesson. So, if parents are concerned about this particular lesson, they can opt out of that. But I do support. I think this is appropriate at that age because, in fact, kids have phones. Thanks.
Ms. Darinak Kofax.
Just quickly, I do want to thank the FLECAC Committee who does work to take on, as our speakers indicated, difficult issues with passions on all sides. I think the recommendations made this year are quite good, and I will be supporting them. And I thank you, Ms. Strauss, for adequately talking about, you know, we've all had, my child is quite removed from sixth grade, but I remember, you know, talking and and dealing with what's going to happen when we get that phone and how we're going to deal with it. And but I think the earlier they understand the consequences of it because it's not going away, it's here, it's with our lives on a daily basis. So, thank you for expressing it that way. And thank you to the FLECAC Committee, and I will be supporting these recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Darinak Kofax. I do have a couple of go-bags, but before we do the go-bags, I would like to offer my support and gratitude to the FLECAC because I appreciate your willingness to take on sensitive issues in our ever-changing world. Because unfortunately, we don't live in Mayberry anymore. Maybe we never did, but our children are exposed to many different perspectives. And with technology and digital citizenship, they are engaged at a higher level than certainly I was when I was in sixth grade. But I also see, as somebody who taught CCD at sixth grade for over 20 years, over that span of 20 years, I saw kids coming into the classroom with different behaviors from the beginning of that time to later. And and those behaviors, you know, are ones where with strong adult guidance, they understand, and they they can be on the right path and and have the right priorities. And so, I welcome and I and I agree with both with all of my colleagues, the parent component, the parent role is critical. But oftentimes, parents, when we come to digital citizenship, are in the catch-up situation. They're not in a situation where they necessarily have experienced some of the things that our kids are experiencing. In February of 2018, the issue of teen sexting became was highlighted by the American Medical Association as a emerging challenge. And in that study, they came out and they said, one in seven teens have been involved in sending sext or been engaged in sexting. That's a pretty large number. And so, the role that the FLECAC played in bringing to our attention an issue and suggesting that we need to involve this in our family life curriculum, one in which we empower parents to make decisions as to whether or not they have their children learn about this, I think is a very sensitive and appropriate approach. So, I appreciate that. And I will, from a personal note, also offer my thanks and appreciation for the curriculum on bystander awareness and intervention. As many people know, we have lost children in our community, young adults in our community, because bystanders didn't know what to do. And so, our kids need to be informed and made aware of skills in their toolbox because they won't be in our homes all the time. And so, we need to make sure that they go out into the world with the assets that they need to be most successful. need to be most successful and supportive of their friends and peers. And so with that, I do have two go-bags. I have Ms. Schultz, and then the last word will go to Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
So I want to thank, and I apologize, I forget which colleague brought it up, the issue of discipline. So it's one thing to take the lessons from subject matter experts outside the organization, which I would have liked to have seen in the development of this recommendation. But it's another, also to add, I would have loved to have added the lens of a school board member. I will tell you, the single worst discipline cases that we spend many hours in that back room doing, the very worst ones are where a school board member has to look at 100 or 200 or 300 pages of a discipline case before us, and there's 50 or 100 pages of students' social media, and we have to read social media posts over and over and over again. This is a very distressing situation that we find ourselves in and that young children get themselves into. And that's why I bring up the issue of, you know, if you haven't gotten your kid a cellphone yet, don't do it. Don't be pressured into doing it. As the only school board member with an elementary-age child, a rising sixth grader next year, he won't have one. Sorry, I hate to tell you this, if you're watching this, you're not getting a cellphone next year. But there is an intentional effort when a child gets a driver's license, it's a very long process. We spend a lot of time teaching them, training them, there's a process, there's a curfew that's put on them, not only by parents but by the state. There's a lot of time that they have to spend with an adult being taught how to do it. We don't just turn the keys of a car over to a child to drive a car, and that's at 15 or 16. And we are turning over the keys to something that every, you know, every tech CEO, every billionaire, every terrorist, and every pornographer has the same device. And we turn that device over. It is not, there's not a tiered device that has tiered access, which I would love the tech development to take place, which is a tiered device that allows access for children at younger ages, but provides some built-in guide rails to allow them not to get into that kind of trouble. Because policy at things like a board level and laws have not caught up. And you find young children being listed as, you know, sexual predators or having to do sex offender registries because, you know, of something very stupid. And so I do appreciate this. I do look forward to the curriculum. I do throw sort of a flag on the field as a marker that there is, I think, a concern that we have not engaged the people who are going to be most affected. You know, when we have a boundary change, we make sure that we go to every effort to engage the community, which is most likely to be affected by a boundary change. We did not, I think, go to every effort to make sure that we engaged early elementary-aged parents. And I think the fact that we only have 21 comments shows that the parents of young elementary-aged children aren't necessarily aware of this potential change. And I think that's on us. I think it's incumbent upon us, when we're going to make a change, that we go and do our due diligence with the community that is going to be affected. And that's the one part that I wish had been done better, and I look forward to extra effort by staff maybe in highlighting this relatively significant change this summer so that elementary-age parents, or parents of elementary-age students will know about this change.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Well, sometimes we don't get a lot of responses when people don't disagree, but, you know. So I just really wanted to point out that I see this as a companion to us discussing discipline. We are really teaching our kids to understand what's an appropriate boundary and what is not an appropriate boundary. And I really do prefer to do preventative work as opposed to receiving that appeal that keeps us in that back room. And so I just want to thank the committee and Ms. Payne for allowing us to do some preventative work. I'd love to talk a little bit more about some of the things that we can put into our curriculum that would help children to better understand, and that could be a future discussion, about understanding the things that they can do to stay out of our discipline system. But I really do appreciate the preventative work here, and perhaps that's some of the things that can be asked in our survey as well by my colleagues, mention just, you know, how many folks have a phone. I think that's got me tickled now. I think most kids in sixth grade do have one, but it would be great to verify that. But I do appreciate the preventative work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to call for the vote, but I just wanted to offer, Ms. Schultz, you mentioned about the importance of people being able to control what students, what their children have access to and don't have access to. You start with whether or not you give them a phone. But the other piece of it is, if you choose to give your child a smartphone, there are a number of free parental controls that are not perfect, but they are something that I would hope everybody would encourage, the use of those parental controls. And the most important parental control is actually parents checking to see how their students' phones are being used. And, you know, in my household, which I didn't give my children their phones until they were older, but they also knew that I owned the phone, so I had the ability to actually take the phone and see how it had been used, both with sites checked as well as text messages. And so I'm sure that we all have a similar approach in our homes, or maybe not.
And take the phone away at night.
Yes, they get left at the front door. So with that, I'll call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Evans, I apologize. I didn't, oh, it just came up.
That's all right. Just a last comment, because I do think this is an important topic. I think that this is a very positive change, that we are going to explain to students the dangers of sexting. I think it's important, as Ms. Keys-Gamarra said, to do the preventative work. Children at younger and younger ages do have phones, and that's the reality of it. And I've been aware personally of situations where young students have been in potentially serious, having a serious problem for simply being in, for receiving, receiving inappropriate photos. And they need to be aware of what they can do if that happens and not be at a loss for what they can do when that happens. And unfortunately, we need to be warning our kids at a younger age than we used to.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And with that, I will call for the vote. And I'm happy to read the vote, read the motion, which is, "The Board approved recommended media and lesson objectives as detailed in the agenda item and as reviewed and recommended by the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee." All those in favor? And that is unanimous. I now am going to call on Ms. Schultz for a follow-on motion. And for my colleagues, the follow-on motion is posted on the screens in front of us.
Thank you. I move to direct the superintendent to have the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee deliver their annual report to the school board, as the other advisory committees currently present annually. The FLEC Act Annual Report should be presented prior to any request for the school board to vote on FLEC Act recommendations for any changes or updates.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. And I think this has come up in the past. Actually, FLEC Act used to present annually to the board, and then at some point in the past, it changed. We're in the middle of, this is the time of year in which we receive advisory committee reports. We receive them over at Gatehouse. The advisory committee selects a number of individuals, and they go through their recommendations. They're posted publicly, they present them to the board, the board has the opportunity to ask questions about those, and those are done sort of in advance of any vote by the board to implement any of the changes. And some of the, actually, the other advisory committees get a little bit frustrated because they have some perpetual recommendations that sort of never get voted on by the board, and they show up in their successive annual report. We seem to have reversed the process here, and I think it, one, will highlight the work of any of our advisory committees in giving them the opportunity to come to the board and speak and present their work, because they do work for a whole year on whatever their recommendations are. And two, it gives the board the opportunity to ask questions of the appointed advisory committee members who present the annual report, so that we can then, at that time, sort of flesh out any questions that we have about potential recommendations prior to them showing up to the dais. And I think it just makes for a more strategic focus for the work for the board.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, Madam Chair. As everybody has eloquently spoken tonight about the importance of the work of the FLEC Act Committee and the subject matters that are sensitive and often difficult ones, that, you know, the FLEC Act Committee should not be relegated to sort of second-class status by not being able to present their findings to the board and have the board, in fact, have the opportunity to discuss their work for the past year. I think this year, there were 30 members of the FLEC Act Committee. Those folks gave their time during the year to work on the FLEC Act issues before them, and I just think it would be prudent for the board to have that presentation and opportunity to discuss it.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Hines.
Yeah, this does sound like a common sense idea. So I'm wondering why we have not done it. In my whole time on the board, we have not, and I wonder if there's, we should probably talk about why we haven't, if there's a good reason. I don't know.
The guidelines for Virginia Department of Education require that we have a community involvement team, which we do. It also requires that we have evidence of broad-based community involvement, which is why we do the 30-day community review, and an opportunity for parents, of course, to review the curriculum prior to instruction. It does not require, it doesn't say that school boards have to vote. It has just been the process that this is, this committee is a curriculum advisory committee, so it's directly impacting curriculum and curricular changes. So as far as a presentation's concerned, sort of what we have operated on over the years is that if the school board would like a presentation, we've done work sessions when asked. We've done, we've had years that we did not do a presentation, years that we had, it was just at the request of discretion in the will of the school board, if that's something they would like to have us do. So we're certainly open to doing that.
So I guess FLEC Act is a bit of a hybrid, right? It's not really like our other advisory committees in some ways, but in the sense that we do appoint people and we do vote on, you know, the recommendations. In that sense, it is like our other advisory committees. So if we decided tonight that we just wanted to do that regularly every year, that would be something that could fit into the calendar of FLEC Act?
I think it would depend on when that would happen, if we want to change the 30-day community review process or not. So when it's, when the meeting's in and taking it through, you know, instructional services and leadership team and cabinet, then to come as new business, 30-day community review and action when the presentation would happen. So if that would need to happen prior to sort of presenting it as new business, that shifts the calendar. As we can see now, the vote is occurring after school has ended, which is, you know, partially concerning. I've been concerned about that. So again, it's certainly your calendar, certainly happy to support. We just need to know what is, what is it that you all would like.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I'll finish. I think it would be good for us to get some clarity tonight about how we want to do this, if we choose to, going forward, and maybe it would be like new business, then we make sure we have a work session with the report before we vote on it. I mean, I think that fits with how we've done other similar kinds of work. And it sounds like that would work. I understand that FLEC Act also has a responsibility to the state, right? I mean, because it is set up by the state, so we have to follow the state's rules as well. So, all right, thank you.
Dr. Ivy.
I was just going to add that I do think that we could accommodate the request. We would have to work with the board chair and vice chair in scheduling it to make sure that we meet the requirements. And just to remind the board that the committee, it's different in that it's a division committee required by state regulation, which is a little different than the other committees that the board, you know, requests. But that doesn't mean that the information isn't as important and that we wouldn't want to discuss and share it at a public meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. That is an important clarification, that it is not an advisory committee where we would give the advisory committee a charge. It is rather a committee in which, to ensure that we have broad-based community involvement, we have the ability as school board members to make appointments to it. But there are a number of other organizations that also make appointments to it. But I think that Ms. Schultz has raised an important concern, which is, for some, they would like to have an actual briefing so that we can discuss this at the table. And so I think that that is something that I could support, as long as we know that we're not going to actually be giving a charge to this committee.
That is correct.
So with that, all those in favor of the follow-on motion to direct the superintendent to have a Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee, have the FLEC Act deliver their annual report to the school board, as other advisory committees currently present annually. The FLEC Act Annual Report should be presented prior to any request, any request for the school board to vote on the FLEC Act recommendations for any changes or updates. Could we add to that with the understanding that it would be after it was presented for new business and before adopted?
Well, if it's just an advisory committee report, the advisory committee reports are presented, they're just...
But it's not, Ms. Schultz, and the challenge is, the advisory committee reports, we're going to be still hearing advisory committee reports into, I mean, we're having four days of meetings next week to do that. And so what this would do by actually suggesting that it is after introduced for new business and before adoption, is that it would put it in the same format as how we do other major reports that we adopt.
Whatever. That makes no difference to the motion, so however you want to do it. That's a mechanics issue as opposed to anything else. That's fine.
Dr. Ivy.
I was just going to say that staff would be prepared to share the results at a work session.
So that's what we will suggest doing. Okay. So all those in favor? That's Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Mr. Moon, oh, it's unanimous. That motion carries. I'm sorry, Ms. Evans is away from the table. Thank you for noting that, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for a consent agenda listing several items for the approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Appoint individuals to serve for a one-year term ending June 30, 2020, on the Adult and Community Education Advisory Academic Programs Career and Technology. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Appoint individuals to serve for a one-year term ending June 30, 2020, on the Adult and Community Education Advisory Academic Programs, Career and Technical Education, Human Resources, Minority Student Achievement Oversight, School Health and Students with Disabilities Advisory Committees, as listed in the agenda item. 6.02. Approve the addendum number 10 to the memorandum of agreement with Northern Virginia Community College to the Pathway to Baccalaureate Program effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, and authorize the Division Superintendent or Deputy Superintendent to execute and administer such contract on behalf of the Fairfax County School Board. Item 6.03. Approve the appointment of Michael Burke to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2019. 6.04. Approve the appointment of Lee Burden, Helen Nixon, and Marty Smith to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020. 6.05. Authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom is authorized to act without the other in consultation with the Office of Division Counsel, to take all actions necessary and appropriate to negotiate, document, execute, and deliver a deed of easement to Fairfax County Water Authority and any other related documents on such items as they deem advisable, and to accept and return certain improvements to school board property. 6.06. Confirm the separations for the period beginning May 1, 2019 and ending May 31, 2019. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I have just a question. Am I able to amend something that's on the consent agenda?
No, ma'am. You actually have to take it off the consent agenda and move it to action. So is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. 7. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01. Authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom is authorized to act without the other in consultation with the Office of Division Counsel, to take all actions necessary and appropriate to negotiate, document, execute, and deliver a deed of easement to Fairfax County and any other related documents on such terms as they deem advisable, and to accept and return certain improvements to school board property. With that, I call on Dr. Ivy for superintendent matters.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Summer vacation is here for our students, and we're gearing up for our summer programs. I too had the pleasure of attending the kickoff event for the summer feeds program yesterday at Bailey's Elementary. An excellent video about the program is now available on the FCPS YouTube channel, and meal locations and times can be accessed through our website homepage. I also want to encourage the public to go on our homepage and access more information about summer learning opportunities to sharpen academic skills or participate in the various camps and institutes that we offer. I want to remind students to read and read and read some more over the summer months. Our schools have suggested summer reading lists and summer reading assignments, and I also want to highlight that FCPS is partnering with Fairfax County Public Schools Library, a public library for summer reading adventure programs. And lastly, today, the State Board of Education recognized 234 Virginia schools for high student achievement or continuous improvement under the board's new exemplar performance school recognition program. And three FCPS schools received the 2019 Board of Ed Highest Achievement Award. They are Forestville Elementary, Wolf Trap Elementary, and Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. And 16 of our schools received the 2019 Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. And those schools are Bailey's Upper Elementary, Bryant High School, Centerville High School, Edison High School, Fairfax County Adult High, Frost Middle School, Herndon High School, Hutchinson Elementary, Justice High School, Kilmer Center, Kings Park Elementary, Lake Braddock Secondary, London Town Elementary, Madison High School, Mountain View High School, and Stenwood Elementary. And we'll be sharing more information with the board about the qualifications for these awards, and we'll share it with the public as well.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. I now call on Ms. Hines for board matters.
Yes, this is a report on the Joint Environmental Task Force of our two boards, the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. The board members, Ms. Corbett Sanders and I from the School Board, and Dan Stork and Penny Gross from the Board of Supervisors have met a few times. We have another meeting coming up on Monday, at which we hope to finalize the selection process for the ultimate members of the task force, the full task force. We've talked quite a bit about that. As soon as we get that finalized, we will be communicating with our respective board members what that process is. It will be, we will have a certain number of citizen members, we'll have a certain number of student members, and we have, we will be communicating with our, those folks, I'm sorry, will be recommended by board members, and then the four of us will choose the members. But anyway, that will be clearer soon, and when we clarify it. The other thing that we are finishing up, we're finalizing, is a mission statement and then a charge for the Joint Environmental Task Force. And just for those in the community who may not be aware of what this is, it was formed a few months ago by both boards at a joint meeting in April. And the idea is that this Joint Environmental Task Force will use the capacity of both the school system and the county government to improve our use of sustainable energy and our environmental sustainability efforts. And so we'll be working in areas of facilities and infrastructure, because we have, both county and schools have significant facilities and infrastructure that would benefit from renewable energy upgrades. We'll also be talking about land use planning, where we overlap transportation. We have, you know, as we know, an enormous bus system that we should begin to convert from fossil fuels. We will also be working on workforce development, because we believe that our students should be prepared for these high, these high-demand 21st century jobs in the climate action and renewable energy fields. And we will also work together on public health issues that arise because of climate change, where we also have overlapping responsibilities. More to come very soon. We hope that the full task force will begin to meet formally in September.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Would you also like to add anything about matters in your own district?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, oh, we're on board matters. I thought we were on committee reports.
No, but I'm glad you did that.
No, I'll pass on my, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Seeing the time, this is the earliest evening I think I've seen in quite a while for a regular board meeting. I'm going to pass as well.
Should I go ahead?
Ms. Palchuk.
I just want to take a moment to thank three outstanding elementary school principals in my district who have decided to pursue other areas or move on this year, and will be looking for three replacements. But I did want to thank Ms. Eugene for her years of leadership at Shreve Wood, for Ms. Elliott, Dr. Elliott over at Graham Road Elementary, and for Ms. Cook over at Timber Lane. They have done great things for our schools, and I know that our Region Two team is hard at work, having community meetings and starting the process, and feel very confident that we have some very strong candidates in our principal pool. Graham Road already had its community meeting, Shreve Wood will be this coming Tuesday, and Timber Lane will be a couple of weeks after that. But I just am very grateful for their work. Summer time sometimes brings some change, and I know that can sometimes be a little unsettling, but we have had some very, very good principals coming in, and I trust that we will be able to not replace them, but find very good folks to take their shoes and move forward in those schools. So thank you to those three leaders, and please feel free to reach out if you do have any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Ms. Darnak-Kofax?
Yes, just briefly, last week I had to leave before our board matters, and I wanted to say I so enjoyed going to the nine graduations that I attended. Each one is unique in its own way, and the student speakers never cease to amaze me about, you know, the way they see the world and the way they are going to change it. So it's always a very inspirational time for me, and I also wanted to take this moment. You've had a week vacation now, just about, so continue to enjoy, relax, recharge, play outside, play with your friends, and enjoy the summer.
Ms.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one thing about that Feed Free Mirrors program, that I was able to go to one site in Annanair earlier today, and it was great to see not only the fact that we are providing free mirrors to students, needy students, but at the same time, we have community members volunteering and serving the food to our needy kids. One question or request that I want to make to Dr. Ivy or Mr. Marty Smith is that I do know that children age 18 or under, they get a free mirrors, whether it's a breakfast or lunch, it's a free mirror, but for the grown-ups, adults, they can purchase lunch at a very low cost, but only at barbecue sites.
Yes, sir.
And I was looking for my very low-cost lunch today, but I was not at a barbecue site, and I was looking for a barbecue site, but there was no indication, notation anywhere which one's barbecue site is amongst 18 sites. So if he could somehow put notation somewhere indicating that which ones are barbecue sites where adults can also take, can take their children with them to enjoy lunch together.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
I'll just add additional information regarding the summer feed program. Folks can text FOOD to 877-877 to find the locations near them. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
And I also was very pleased to be part of the kickoff for the summer meals program. It was a great event, and thank you to our Food and Nutrition Services experts in particular for a great event. That was at Bailey's Primary Elementary School, and I do want to let my constituents know that there are several locations in Mason District where they can receive the free lunch for any kid, you know, any kid that is there, and the adults can come and pay a very modest price to participate as well. In addition to Bailey's Primary, Brenmore Park also has the program through August 23rd, and at the Wilston Multicultural Center. There are shorter programs in, starting in July, at several other schools, Beechtree, Belvedere, Camelot, Glasgow, Glen Forest Homes, Justice High School, Mason Crest Park Lawn, Sleepy Hollow, West Lawn, and Wayanoke as well. So those are different schedules, so please do go online or text, as Ms. Keys-Gamara mentioned, to find out dates and times. And thank you for such a successful program to our staff.
Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, just one brief note from my Robinson community, who has been waiting and waiting and waiting for a principal panel. We are paneling for a principal selection process at the end of next week, or beginning of next week, and I just want to let folks know that, fingers crossed, we will have a candidate come out of that process and have a principal announcement soon. There will also be principal announcements for Cardinal Forest and Burke forthcoming, so my community should watch for those coming shortly from staff.
Ms. Strauss.
I just want to thank again all of the people who came out to the important meeting last night at Forestville Elementary School to discuss the CIP. The Great Falls Citizens Association helped get the word out, and it was a robust and very important discussion. And I want to congratulate Forestville Elementary, that I believe was mentioned as being recognized as an outstanding school. It's very nice. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Before, I just have a couple of comments or announcements. One, oh, actually, Dr. Ivy, would you like to say something first, and then I'll conclude?
Sure. I just had one other item to add, and that is to let the public know that we're holding our first meeting for our Special Education Task Force on Monday, and we want, and we will be discussing and reviewing best practices around restraint and seclusion. And also want to thank the members of the committee who have been identified and who have committed to participating in our task force.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. From Mount Vernon, I've got a couple of announcements. One is, I'm glad to hear that the task force is meeting on Monday. Thank you very much. And secondly, I want to congratulate, congratulate South County High School's girls softball team, state champions. Bravo. Go Stallions. And then I also want to encourage people to not only do summer reading, but get out and enjoy the sights and activities in our community. We have lots of summer concerts at Washington, at the Griss Mill Park, at the Lorton Workhouse, as well as in, at Fort Hunt Park in Mount Vernon, and I am sure that in other magisterial districts, there are a number of great opportunities for the family to get out, listen to some wonderful music, which includes many of our high school jazz bands and other performing arts, and also spend quality family time together. I would also encourage people, there is an opportunity next Saturday, June 29, to attend the Disability and Inclusion Conference at the Fairfax County Government Center, and that is June 29. And with that, this board is going to go back into closed session, so we will not be adjourning quite yet. I will read the motion. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to consult with legal counsel for matters pertaining to, I'm sorry, we've already done, hold on. To discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the assignment of performance to motion salaries, resignation, and/or disciplining of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and to discuss cybersecurity matters pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A19 of the Code of Virginia, and four, to discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning one or more students pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Strauss. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous. We are now in closed session.